Good evening and welcome to the September fourteenth, twenty twenty one Northern London School District Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Please arise and join me in a pledge of allegiance and the moment of silence led by Director Na.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please? Gray.
Here.
Marlo.
Here.
Fowler. Klein.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
Sekelik.
Here.
Naom.
Here.
Bucks.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Director Fowler, absent all other members are present. Thank you. Now we move to item two, that is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. We move to item three, that is the presentation section of the evening. I'd like to announce that the high school students of the month for September are Luke Dresch and Sashi Patel. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club. The middle school student of the month for September is Kalen Harmon. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Congratulations to all of those students. Do we have our student board representative with us tonight? Kim Higaretta? Is she on Zoom? Oh, she's here. Welcome, Kim. When you get to the podium, please just hit the button to make sure that the mic is on.
Tess? Okay. Um, good evening, everyone. Today, um, I'm going to be talking about our student council. I am the board rep. My name is Kimberly Higaretta. And I'm in tough grade. Um, uh, for hall decorating, we are doing it September twenty fourth, where all the students decorate their own hallway and the teachers judge it. Powder puff, we've had moved the date to September twenty four, to some September twenty fifth. It's going to be a Saturday and it was going to be September twentieth, but we had to move it. Spirit Day starts September twenty seventh, October first. Monday is going to be Great Gatsby Color Day. Tuesday is nineties to two thousands day. Wednesday will be pajama day. Thursday is Jersey Day and Friday is N L Spirit Day. Um, September twenty seventh would be car smash. Everyone pays a dollar to hit the car. We're going to have protection. Uh, September twenty ninth would be Great Gatsby. We're going to be showing the seventy four show. And it's going to be free. Car decorating will start September thirtieth, which you, anyone who is legally can drive, can decorate their own car and teachers will be judging it to see who can win. October first will be bonfire, prep rally and the game. And then homecoming is October second. Which since I think it says up five to ten. Any questions?
Do you know who we play for homecoming?
I do not.
Get decorate that car so we can speed it up a little bit. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we have Crystal Bumgarner, I believe. Is Crystal here? The Lebanon County Dairy Princess has a presentation for us. Welcome, Crystal.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Crystal Bumgarner. I'm the Lebanon County Dairy Princess and I'm getting ready for state pageant on September twenty fifth, and this will be my speech that I will compete, be competing with. I'm also a part of the Northern Lebanon FFA program. I'm your president for this year and so here's my speech. Work hard in silence and let your success make the noise. This is a quote I live by daily. Whatever I do, whether it be swimming, volleyball, basketball, or working on a farm, just everyday activities in general. I strive to do my best at these things and push my body to be the best that it can be. This is why I choose to drink chocolate milk. Chocolate milk. Whoever thought that this could be the perfect sports recovery drink, it may be more beneficial than you think. In fact, Dr. Charles Smith, a U A M S family medicine doctor, said that some new research seems to suggest chocolate milk as the perfect sports recovery drink. Chocolate milk has just the right balance of carbohydrates, proteins and glycogens to help refuel your muscles and recover after a hard workout or game. And yes, chocolate milk is beneficial in recovering after sports and intense physical activities, but it helps for having good energy and strength to do normal activities from day to day. Chocolate milk also has thirteen essential nutrients in it that is not usually found in other recovery drinks. The protein, calcium, vitamin D, and other nutrients in chocolate milk, as well as minerals, electrolytes, and other important nutritional facts. The consumption of any types of cow's milk is beneficial for maintaining energy and having strength to do normal activities from day to day. Cow's milk is also naturally high in protein. Protein is beneficial because it boosts satiety and helps you maintain a lean muscle mass even during periods of weight loss. Milk is also the best source of calcium that we can supply to our bodies. Chocolate milk also has the right carb to protein ratio that has been scientifically shown to rebuild tired and fatigued muscles. It provides fluid for rehydration by delivering electrolytes such as calcium, potassium, sodium and magnesium to help replenish what was lost in sweat while working out. Glycogen and chocolate milk also helps replenish what was lost during physical activities and benefits your future performance as well. Chocolate milk also contains vitamins and minerals to help build and maintain strong bones and teeth, crucial in reducing the risk for stress fractures, which is on the top of every athlete's mind. Next to water, milk is considered the best fluid for rehydration, and there have been many studies to prove this. The Department of Kinseology and Health Education at the University of Austin studied a hundred participants, including those of varsity boys athletes and girls athletes with the average age of fifteen. The students trained four times a week for five weeks with field free weights and field agility drills. They were randomly placed into one of two groups. Those who could drink chocolate milk as their recovery drink and those who would drink a leading sports beverage instead. At the end of five weeks, the two groups showed significant difference in two areas. The bench press and the squat. The athlete who drank chocolate milk bench pressed an average of three point five percent more than they could before, while the, the, the group who drank the commercial sports beverage decreased in strength by about three point two percent. And that is a difference of six point seven percent for those who drank chocolate milk rather than the sports commercial beverage. Both groups, however, showed improvement with the squats, but the chocolate milk drinkers lifted fifteen percent more than they could before, while the commercial sports beverage drinkers only lifted eight percent more. And that is a difference that is almost double the increased strength for the chocolate milk drinkers. Chocolate milk is a nutritious powerhouse. Chocolate milk has thirteen essential nutrients in it. Many studies have shown that chocolate milk is a great recovery drink, especially for high school athletes. As well as being a great recovery drink and it is also a delicious way that you can get your three servings of dairy every day. So if you have a goal, you can achieve it, you can be successful. So next time you come off the court, field, track or gym, grab a nice full glass of chocolate milk. And hey, you can't wear a mask to drink chocolate milk. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. I'm definitely thirsty for a glass of chocolate milk now. Best of luck at the state Dairy Princess Pageant. Next, we have item four, that is our superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just real in the midst of everything else going on. Uh, Friday had the opportunity to get out to Jonestown Elementary and see the, uh, the nine eleven tribute that they did. And if you've never seen that, um, the kids, um, each designed, for lack of a better word, a, a placard, a flag, a piece of cardboard. It had different things. Some, some were pictures of, of family members, uh, some service members. Uh, some were just flags, some were, uh, you know, words. Um, and then they had a timeline also of the events of that day. Uh, and the kids came out and walked through it and Mr. Reese and I had a chance to go do the same thing. And, uh, it was incredibly moving and, and just a bright moment last week. In terms of, of the kids remembering what happened to our country that day. Uh, and, and so not celebrating, but tribute, a tribute to, um, to the many, many heroes that, uh, that stepped forward and, and, you know, helped with rescues, the servicemen, the, uh, the rescue workers. And it was just very touching and I, 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 I wanted to make sure that I, I talked about that. I don't know how many people got to see that, but they did a great job. I know all the schools celebrate in different ways. That just happened to be the one that I got to. Um, as far as, um, things moving along with the, the, uh, construction, um, hoping to have a, uh, I know I gotta get with Director Na and Director Marlo on a groundbreaking thing. Hoping within about two weeks to go out and do the, the groundbreaking, uh, ceremony. And, uh, as you can see, the turf field is coming along the scoreboard one up today. The fencing is, is getting close to being done. Uh, light poles are on their way. Uh, they'll be continuing to do some work with the grading of the dirt, but uh, teams are playing on that. The field hockey team played last week on it. Uh, and there's a soccer game on it tomorrow, but they've been practicing and that's been really exciting for the kids. So, uh, two positives, I think, uh, going on that I just wanted to share tonight. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session on Monday, September thirteenth to receive confidential legal information from our solicitor. Moving to item five, that is old business. Is there any old business for discussion this evening? And we move to item six, that is our first public input session. Our first public input session includes comments only on items seven through ten on the agenda. And we have one request for public input on these items. That request is from Mr. Darren Martin. Mr. Martin, please come to the podium. And state your name and address before you speak and you have four minutes. So have Mr. Martin. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Darren Martin. I live at four oh four Gulf Road in Myers Town, Pennsylvania. And I'm one of the church leaders at Sharon Mennonite Church in Northern Lebanon County. And we worship in a church building currently at the intersection of Union and Grebel Roads. And the reason I'm here is to request a waiver of the back taxes for a piece of property to which we would like to move our church building. And the reason we would like to move it is because the current location is landlocked with very little parking and a septic system that is marginal with no options to purchase adjoining land. The farmland that borders the church is in a permanent farmland preserve that can't be changed for any reason. So we've looked at all the options and moving the church to this portion of land would be very, a very practical option that would overcome the challenges that we are facing now. The plan would be to use wolf house movers to move the complete church building intact to the new location. Just down the road a little bit. So just a few comments on the property owner that is willing to sell the land to us. The only reason he is willing to sell the land to us is because of the church. Uh, he has had several requests to sell land for other purposes and he has turned them all down. So when we approached him and we explained what our need was and why this would work the best, he agreed to sell us the land. And the price that we had come up with, uh, was a result of negotiations that we had going back and forth, looking at the appraised value, looking at the potential future value, if he wouldn't be selling it right now. And so we're satisfied with the final price that we came up with. And since we started this process about two years ago, land values have gone up considerably, especially in the last year. And most likely will continue to rise. Um, additional comments on this, this landowner, the landowner is an older man. He's part of the Amish church. He lives in Lancaster County where the land value is much higher than it is in our area. And he rents the farm out right now, but he wants to keep the farm in case one of his children or grandchildren would like to farm at some point. And I did also learn that his wife had recently had some medical issues and since the Amish church does not believe in insurance, he will probably be using some of the money to pay those medical bills. Now, just to reiterate a little bit, uh, the way the law reads on the cleaning green program in which the farmland is currently enrolled, if the back taxes are waived, only the taxes on the portion of the land the church would purchase would be waived. The rest of the property would stay in clean and green and the property owner would need to pay all those back taxes on the rest of the land if he ever decides to subdivide the land for any other purpose. So the actual amount of back taxes that are getting waived are approximately three to five thousand dollars. I don't have the exact amount because I'm not sure of the exact acreage of the farm. But if the waiver is not given, the back taxes on the entire farm need to be paid and they're in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. So I asked the board to consider the benefits of the tax waiver to the church. Um, just a little bit of history. The church has been used by our congregation for over forty years.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, I, um, I just, yeah, I read each of your bios on the North Lebanon School District website. I'm glad to know that this board is very involved with churches. And I just kindly ask you to consider the needs of the church and your decision. Um, I appreciate, uh, your consideration. If you have any other questions or need further explanation on anything, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin, do you remember the name of the person you talked to that gave you the interpretation of the waiver?
Uh, that would be Ted Conley with, uh, Lebanon, um, County Office.
Okay, thank you.
Now we move to item seven, that is our items for board action. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act eighty four of nineteen eighty six. Our consent agenda includes items that were discussed last week. This is items eight point one through eight point nine. May I have a motion to approve items eight point one through eight point nine as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Now we move on to, um, other items for board action. These are items that are on the discussion agenda. We begin, uh, with item nine point one. That is, uh, the request to approve the tax waiver request from Sharon Mennonite Fellowship. May I have a motion to approve item nine point one?
I would like to make a motion to approve item nine point one.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, I, uh, my understanding was that the amount that we would be waiving is considerably higher. And I don't know how we can vote this evening without knowing the actual figure. As far as the, oh, here it comes. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I, it may, we had a different interpretation. I don't know if we need more information or not.
I don't, I don't know that we had a different interpretation. I think we're saying the same thing. So what he is saying is the rest of the land will go back into clean and green and should it ever sell, you still have the chance of those rollback taxes. However, if you don't waive this, they have to pay that. He did say you do have to pay that full hundred forty thousand dollars in taxes. So he's saying your loss of taxes would only be the three to five thousand dollars. It's one of those numbers games we out, you know. So the loss of taxes would be that three to five thousand dollars. However, you would be waiving that full hundred forty thousand dollars in taxes. Do you understand? The way the law is written, you either waive it yes or you don't at all.
So they're waiving, they're waiving the full amount, but they're only losing the smaller amount.
At this time, yes. I hate to say you're only losing that amount, but yes, because the rest will go back in the clean and green and could still be subject to back taxes in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any other discussion?
So the vote is to either waive the taxes or don't, correct?
Correction is to approve it.
To approve.
Motion that's on the, on the table is to.
Approve waving.
I understood that there was a possibility for us to place some conditions upon the transfer of the plot. Is that still correct?
The deed exemption. Want to talk about that?
Yes, the church did agree that they would place deed restrictions and they would place deed restrictions on the land that they're purchasing newly from the farmer, which is had a corner across the street next to their cemetery, that it would stay in a nonprofit or church, non, or agriculture use, that it wouldn't go to commercial or residential. And then it could also be up to you if you wanted to force them to place deed restrictions on their current, I think it's four point two acres that they own on Grebel Road. They would also put that into deed restrictions if you wanted to, or you could let them use that at their discretion to become a residential lot or whatever they choose.
Are we able to, um, place a condition or at least state for the record that this would be a one-time tax exemption on the broader plot, do you know?
I think he's asking if, that if there, if there was additional sales. This is, this is, this is not granting permission in the future for other.
Right. You wouldn't have to state that. I mean, if the farmer, are you talking about the farmer who owns, owns a hundred five, eighty five acres?
Correct.
You selling five to them, that if he would sell any of the additional hundred eighty acres that. So when you waive this, you are only waiving it for the sale on this five acres. Everything else remains in clean and green and would be subject to the tax laws. Like I said, though, if they sell ten or more acres, it goes into clean and green. There's no process for you to waive those taxes. If they sell two or less subdivided at a certain number of times, they can do that and also avoid taxes.
Right. And so my question is, would we be able to place a restriction now to say that this is a one-time only exemption on the remaining hundred and whatever?
Oh, like you mean that he would, that that farmer would not be able to parcel up his land?
Without paying the tax.
Even for the, like, if they did a ten acres and kept it in clean and green or if they did a two for subdividing?
That's right.
I guess you could ask, but I, I don't imagine that that farmer is going to agree to that.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Barton, would you, I, I guess I would recommend hearing that, that the actual deed restriction be placed in the motion.
Yes, I would like to amend my motion to approve the tax waiver request from Sharon Minai Fellowship with the restriction that the portion that is being excluded will be reserved for, uh, nonprofit use.
Right. And I do want to clarify, you're putting a deed restriction on a land that the church is owning. You're not putting any deed restrictions on the farmer's property.
Second.
So we're still discussing. So we was also kind of brought up the last time we, that brought up. You know, where do we, where do we go from here as far as other, other farmland being sectioned off similar? Uh, as far as fairness, uh, from one group to the other, we can say that this is obviously is a very honorable. Uh, thing and it's going to help us, the, the farmer's family, all these things. But where do, where do we draw the line and? Um, I, I think that needs to be at least discussed and agreed upon before. Going forward with this because. You know, you really are going to open up the floodgates for people that want, oh, well, now I can have this nonprofit. Come over and then where, which nonprofits are ones that we think are good? Are you getting on the real gray areas here? So. Like to some, just hear some discussion on other people's thoughts on that.
I agree. I, I mean, I agreed last week when that was brought up that I just, I don't like messing with Clean and Green. I don't like. Uh, it's, it's not the nonprofit or profit or anything else. I just don't, I don't like messing with that, especially when there's a profit gained. By the farmer selling the land that's in Clean and Green in general. It's not donated. It's sold. He's making a profit. And he's getting away from those taxes. So that's, I just don't like to mess with it.
I, I also am concerned about upholding the integrity of Clean and Green. Um, I think that it certainly is a beneficial program that. Benefits many in our community and um, the reason it works and the parameters that were set. Um, and were set there for a reason and have a, a, a purpose and um. So I also hate to um, mess with. The program that's already been established. That's been such a benefit to so many in our community. I don't, I want to continue to uphold the integrity of that program. Although I certainly um do pause, um, because it certainly is a, um, I understand it's a, a need for the, the church, so. Um, but it, but I also um, value that, that program and the benefit it is to. To so many in our community and if that program would be done away with or there would be uh multiple waivers requested. Um, by multiple people in our community, my fear would be that there would be. That the program would no longer be sustainable and that would impact the greater community. So that's where my concern is.
Uh, since I made the motion, I, I think I would, I would just express that I, I'm also sensitive to the idea that it opens the floodgates. I think at most this opens. The floodgates to request. It doesn't necessarily mean that it opens the floodgates to granting. Such waivers, I think, as would be our obligation, we should look at each of these on a case-by-case basis. I think the specific conditions of the church's request are instructive and compelling to me. That it is a very limited um acreage, that this is a church that has been in existence for. A long, long, long time, that there's a location of a cemetery on the property that is connected to that church family. It is a nonprofit. We have a condition that would leave that land as nonprofit. Um, I think those factors on a case-by-case individualized basis is what we should look at. As a board and future boards um would be obligated to look at. So for that reason, uh, on the facts of this case, I'm in favor.
I just want to make sure that I fully understand what a yes vote and a no vote means. If we vote yes, we are saving. The church who purchases the five acres approximately three to $5,000 because we have waived the taxes on that five acres, correct?
No, that would be, that's not correct. So what you're doing when you vote yes. You are saving the farmer. And the sale wouldn't happen. If you vote yes, it's, it's not going to happen. Or if you vote no, it's not going to happen. But when you vote. Yes, you're saving the farmer and paying $100,000 plus in back taxes on all of his acres.
And if we vote no. The church has to pay, can you explain it, what a no vote means?
A no vote means that should the sale still go through. The farmer, when the land is sold, would be forced to pay back taxes on all 185 acres. Which amounts to approximately 130 to 140,000 dollars. So there's either the hundred, like the hundred plus thousand dollars being paid or not being paid. There's not a number of three to 5,000.
And I'm guessing that the practical result of that would be that the sale would not go through.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll speak quickly. Uh. I look at Clean and Green as a farmer's choice. I own, I own a farm in the district and uh. I know that if I choose to use Clean and Green, it is a way for, for me to save taxes and I think when you sign up for Clean and Green. You go into the. The, the whole thing with the, the idea that. You know, the kind of the rules of it are, if you ever do intend to sell any land or parcels off of it, you will be in. Uh, you will be asked to pay the back taxes. So I, you know, I don't think this is. A surprise to the farmer or anything. It was something they wanted to do, so uh, I, I can't support it and I, I'll vote no.
Yeah, I'll just um. Uh, I think it's a slippery slope to go down. I think it's really difficult to. Uh, as Director Noms said, try to um, you know, look at each story. Um, I appreciate that um. You know, that this story is a, a story that today we feel is compelling. But um, I, I just think it's a slippery slope and, and I don't know as much about Clean and Green from a farming standpoint, but. All that I have learned about it, 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 it is a program that you want to keep intact and um. Yeah, I don't think we want to sit up here and, and. Increase the number of requests and have to spend our time um judging whether they are worthy or not.
I just want to read the motion once more to make sure that I have this correct. The motion is to approve the tax waiver request from Sharon Mennonite Fellowship with the restriction that those five acres remain in nonprofit use. Is that correct?
Yes.
If there is no further discussion, then I will ask for a roll call vote from Mrs. Martin. Gray.
No.
Marla.
No.
I'm the Wigginsham.
No.
Klein.
No.
Murray.
No.
Pellic.
No.
Mom.
Yes.
Bucks.
No.
Erdman.
No.
Seven, no. One, yes. Motion failed. Thank you. Now we move on to our other discussion items for this evening. Uh, we have item nine point two. Dr. Messinger, would you like to introduce?
My nine point two is an updated full coach list, added a few there volunteers. Uh, and then also a trip request for the American Sign Language class that is at Gallaudet University.
I think we'll cover nine point two through nine point four together, but are there any questions on nine point two right now? Go on.
Uh, sure, nine point three, uh, two resignations for you there, an FMLA request. And also employment for professional substitutes. Uh, employment, uh, health and physical, physical education teacher. Uh, and a transfer, uh, Mr. Rizzo to Director of Athletics, uh, effective TBD. And nine point four is that branding guide that uh you, you got a couple of weeks ago to take a look at, the updated logo. Uh, and branding information that we'll be using for our district and our sports teams after approval.
Are there any questions on those items? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve item nine point two through nine point four as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. We have a couple informational items for item 10.
Yeah, just two items there. Uh, one, we had an outdated fee schedule that we had in place for a, a, a long time and. Didn't really cover everything and we would get requests and Pat would say to me. What are we going to charge? And we didn't really know. So we tried to put together a fee schedule now that uh. Uh, makes sense and, and is a little easier to use. Uh, and then we can get that programmed in FMX so people know when they're reserving, if they're not affiliated with London, London. Uh, and then also we had an LBC student that's assigned to uh Jack Beiler for social studies.
Now we move to item 11, that is our public input session on item 12. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. This evening we have several public comments. Uh, we ask that all of those public comments, please be respectful and courteous. We do want to hear from all of you who have put in the request to speak. Uh, but if we do not retain a, an environment of respect and courteousness, uh, we will be forced to end the public comment session. I ask that I will call the first five names. Uh, those who are called, please come to the front. Um, each person will receive four minutes. So the first five requests are Ms. Kimberly Bolts. Ms. Kelly Hetrick. Tarina Churnick. Mrs. Jody Fry. And Ms. Tanya Hess.
Good evening again, Kimberly Bolt. I'm sorry. Kimberly Bolts, 149 Twin Creeks Drive. Um, so just a couple of questions tonight. Um, when this order came down from the Governor and Department of Health Secretary. Um, I wasn't too concerned about it because um. I thought the school board would vote on it. Um, according to the Health and Safety Plan, any recommended revisions to this plan regarding masks. Will be communicated to and voted on by the Northern Lebanon School District Board. Um, and it was a unanimous vote of eight to nothing. So um, when you voted in July, so I had. I had a lot of faith that we would continue with masks being optional. Um, I understand there's some concerns with the legality of it and. And all that stuff, but there's other school districts in this state that are, that are still voting. And going with their original plans of masks optional. So I'm just curious as to why we can't do that. If votes changed, understood, but we haven't even done a vote yet. Um. So I was just doing some research and in the public school code of 1949. States that several school districts in this Commonwealth shall be and hereby are vested as bodies corporate with all necessary powers. To enable them to carry out the provisions of this act. So last week I was here and I had to leave a little early. Uh, so I didn't get to stay for all the board comments, but I did go, I did watch on Zoom. And what I caught from um the board president's um remarks. Uh, four times during those remarks in your speech, um, and I quote, I am not at all interested in power. So my question to you and all the board is, why are you here if you're not interested in the power? We need you guys to be our voices and stick up for us. Um, there's obviously majority here that at least want a vote. That's all we're asking for. So. You say you want to trust in the health experts, but the health expert is an unelected and unconfirmed lawyer. Who thinks she knows what's best for my family and I'm not okay with that. The government's job is to protect my rights and it's my job to protect. My health and the health of my family. Last week, uh, I read statistics about childhood deaths with COVID and how low they were. Um, my daughter sent me a text from school the, last week. And she said, a girl in her class was crying when she was sent to the auditorium because her exemption, there was um. Miscommunication with it and she was sent to the auditorium and had to put a mask on. And my daughter texted me and she said, that's the problem. They only care about the masks for our safety, but they don't care about her mental health. And she's 12 and she's seeing it.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Um, so I did research on the um, the uptick of child, child suicides and all that. I'm not going to read that to you. It's heartbreaking. And it's astonishing and you know, I encourage you to do your own research. Children as young as seven. Are committing suicide and it's never before seen numbers pre-pandemic. Um, so again, I mean, we can say it over and over again. We can pack 106,000 people in Beaver Stadium. We have all this stuff going on. You can walk into any store pretty much, but yet only our K through 12 students are sitting in masks.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Miss Bolt. Our next speaker this evening is Ms. Kelly Hetrick. Ms. Hetrick, please state your name and address and you have four minutes.
My name is Kelly Hetrick. My address is 46 Shirks Church Road, Palmyra. Hello, my name is Kelly Hetrick. I have a daughter Madison that graduated from this school district in 2018. And I have a son Mitchell who is a senior this year. My plan was to simply sit back, not get involved if I didn't have to. Coast on out as all my children, children would have graduated through the Northern Lebanon School District. I recently came to the realization that that was absolutely the wrong thing to do as a parent. With concerns for the well-being of our children and trying to figure out what's the right thing to do with this mask mandate. I think we've lost sight of some of the facts and why we're at this crossroad. Fact number one, kids ages zero through 17 have a 99.9957% survival rate from COVID. So why are we afraid? Number two, masks are not guaranteed to prevent the spread of COVID unless any one of you can provide me documentation that shows that. In fact, there are many dangerous pathogens that cling to the mask according to the University of Florida study. Which includes pneumonia. Tuberculosis, meningitis, keratitis, and E. coli. So how do you know that children are coming to school with a clean mask every day? Number three, carbon monoxide inhalation is increased to a dangerous level when they're wearing a mask and that's a fact. Number four, there's a cure for COVID. We don't hear about that mainstream media. It's ivermectin and hydrochlor, hydro, hydrochlora, you know what I'm saying? Thank you. James Meehan, MD out of Tulsa, Oklahoma, has successfully treated over 2,700 patients. With their, with zero deaths using this regimen. There are other physicians out there using the same regimen. That, of course, the mainstream media will not allow them to talk or post anything on social, social applications. Day after day, we're lied to by mainstream media and social media applications. There's so much disinformation regarding the statistics. Of those infected in the treatment of COVID. As a country, our government have basically tried to turn unvaccinated folks against vaccinated folks. Which instead is a country and a community and the state of Pennsylvania, we should be coming together to say enough is enough with these mandates. We live in America, home of the brave and land of the free. And I said, land of the free. Which stands for freedom to choose whether or not to wear a mask. The fact is a mask is not guaranteed to stop the spread of COVID. My son does not wear a mask to church. He doesn't wear a mask to the grocery store. He doesn't wear a mask to go to the restaurant. He doesn't wear a mask when him and his football buddies come over to our house after school. It just doesn't make any sense. Why would he wear a mask in school? He's around some of the same kids he's. He's around some of the same kids he's with day in and day out in school. I'd like to remind all of you as school board members, you were elected to represent me as a parent of a senior in this school district.
Thirty seconds.
I would encourage you to not give into the fear that the Wolf Administration, Department of Health, Department of Education, as well as the solicitor is instilling in you. The irony of all of this is that we have a heightened awareness of bullying in the schools and that is exactly what is happening to you as school board members. Additionally, kids are also being bullied in school by teachers if they choose not to wear a mask.
That's time.
This month, we're discussing mask mandates. Next month, we may very well be discussing. I, I think I get a couple more minutes. I stopped for the applause.
That's time.
Next month, we may be discussing vaccines.
Ms. Tarina Chernick. Ms. Chernick, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Tarina Chernick, 897 Pine Grove Road, Fredericksburg. I currently have three children tending Northern Lebanon School District. My opposition to the mandate is irrelevant to the current exemption rules. I have a kin partner who is okay, just wear a mask. That's fine. I have a sixth grader who said, I want to go to school. I had to wear a mask all year last year, five days a week. I'll just wear a mask. I also have an eighth grader who went to school two days a week and came home with a headache every day he went to school. And when we told them, sat him down and told him that there was a possibility that there were going to be required a mandate to wear masks to school every day, his words to us were, I'm not wearing a mask. I will go virtual or go to another school. And at this point, that's where we're backing him. I'm not going to have a child that goes to school five days a week and comes home with a headache. That's child abuse, in my opinion. And now I, so with two wearing a mask and one who's not, I'm not trying to deny the mandate. I'm trying to be able to advocate for the children who choose or their parents help them choose to not wear a mask. And for, and we said we would support them in whatever choice that they were comfortable with. Our son continued to say that he'll go virtual, going to, he's not going to wear a mask even after learning that it would, he would have to give up extracurricular activities such as wrestling because he can't opt to wear a mask when it's convenient so he can do something that he wants. He understood and decided that he would opt to give up any extracurricular activities at the school. We need, we read, read and understand the mandate and that it was being enforced. And it was simple. He qualified under, as you know, section three, the exemptions for COVID, not being comfortable. I don't have to read that. You guys have all read, I'm assuming, read the mandate and, and then it was simple. We fill out the form and we would be able to continue in-person schooling. Then I started filling out the exemption form and the form listed four things. One, I didn't have a problem with, yes, he could get COVID, he could pass COVID, that's fine. Submitting his permission for the school district to have access to his medical and mental health records is unacceptable. They have absolutely nothing, nothing to do with the exemption at hand. There are things in my son, we got him when he was 11 years old. There are things in his medical records that is his story to share. It is not anyone's business unless he chooses, I choose, or my husband choose to share that. And I have shared it with at least one person on the board that answered my phone call when I asked them what to do, what can I do? Because I filled out the exemption form and it was denied because it wasn't a Northern Lebanon School District form. And at this point, with all of you being threatened by the Department of Education, Department of Health, stand up for our kids. We're trying to stand up for them right now. And it is your obligation to help stand up for them. I understand that you are threatened and you have been threatened, but some, some things you just have to stand up no matter what.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Chernick.
I just want to share before we go on, I was specific about the exemption form because we had an exact session. Yeah. I don't remember what it was, talking about the exemption form and I will tell you that I don't, you know, you don't go to training, you don't go to, you don't take courses to deal with a pandemic as, as an administrator, as a teacher. I have no experience with this whatsoever. I mean, it's, it's, it's new to me and a mandate that came down on August 31st, our second day of school, followed by a hurricane put us in a position, you know, where we were scrambling to try to do the best we could with it. You know, we, we looked at different forms and thought about different things. However, in a discussion with the board, we agree that the 504 process in itself does not require a medical document necessarily. There are things, for instance, if your child went to,
It's also a label.
If your child went to a, the nurse for headaches, you know, last year at all. There's, that's documentation that can be used. Anyway, the exemption, excuse me, excuse me.
My particular child stood up and left it go and so he can continue to learn. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, so there isn't nurse documentation.
Okay. And that's fine too. I just want to say that the exemption form, we tweaked, we changed it. We talked about changing the exemption form. I broke it into two pieces with permission of the board. There's a, the first form clearly now states that you don't need to require, we don't, you don't need to submit medical documentation. And I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was you. I thought it was coming from somewhere else. It's coming to the speaker me from a different direction or I would have let you talk, but the documentation, the form no longer requires that medical documentation. Now it doesn't mean, now certainly if you have it, it's easy. It's a, it's a quick boom, hey, there's medical documentation and a story. If you don't have it though, there's more to that story. It could be, it still could be a pretty quick decision depending on what's there. It also could be a phone call to the parent to say, hey, talk to me about this. Let's, let's have a discussion.
I know a call was made to you. I'm the person that they were talking about.
Oh, okay.
I'm the parent.
Well, the form, the form is changed and ready to go and it does not require doctor, a doctor's note. And it's split up into two different forms now. The second form would be if you have something that you want to turn in, turn it in, it does make, it makes the evaluation process simpler. If you don't, we put it under review, we talk about it and, and there's a process that, you know, we'll call the parent, we'll have a discussion if we need some more information and that's what we'll do. So I appreciate the feedback on that from both the board and parents such as yourself.
As you know, my answer to that with the access to the medical records is if you don't fill out, it was suggested, if you don't fill out the doctor's information, then they can't call your doctor, but yes, because every school year we have to supply a physical and we have to supply shots. So you have access to that and then by me signing that, I just signed and gave you permission.
Yeah.
To do that. And that's where I have a, I had a problem.
I understand and I don't really want to be calling the doctor to be honest with you.
But you understand where I'm coming from.
I, yeah, I do. The problem is that doctors aren't giving the permissions. So if there's a, if there's a diagnosis of anxiety, if there is a, something that we don't know about, if asthma, things like that, that typically we may not know. The simple confirmation is one way to, to make, be able to make a quick judgment. And that was, that was the design of it initially. Obviously it made it a hardship. I think the board recognized that. I appreciate parents like you recognizing it and pointing it out to us. That has been changed and I'll get it out tomorrow with the blessings of the board tonight. So I just wanted to, because I appreciate the comments and it led to some change with that.
So we should rest assured that that, this whole process is going to change.
Well, the medical exemption process is a lot easier. Now you can just sign off and put your reason in. It still does not allow for the religious exemptions or the,
Right.
They're blank ones, but it does. No, it doesn't. It guarantees a review process that we will work with the parent to try to, if we need more information, we'll gather that from you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. You're fine. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Jody Frye. Mrs. Frye, please state your name and address. Do we have Mrs. Frye? Please state your name and address before speaking and you have four minutes.
Hi, I'm Jody Frye. That's 326 Shepherd Street, Jonestown. I won't even take four minutes because I didn't prep anything. It's just kind of where I am. I have a sixth grader or an eighth grader now and a child in elementary school, but my entire family had COVID at the beginning of January. Both of my, my youngest, my elementary schooler had very slight symptoms. My middle schooler now was asymptomatic COVID positive and is in the midst of getting his COVID vaccines. So my issue is that this mandate, and I realize it's not, the board has nothing to do with the mandate, okay? But the mandate makes no exemption for anything other than masks or don't go to school. My son is better protected because he and my daughter is better protected because they have COVID, both have COVID antibodies. And my son is receiving the vaccine, yet he's still made to mask when he comes into this school. I received for my daughter, the exemption form today. My issue, my major issue now is that I'm going to be asked or part of that form states that she can be subject to some kind of review for her, you know, medical status. There is a section of that form. And the people that could be reviewing her status, it doesn't say who's going to look her over if it's a nurse, a doctor, someone that's hired or someone that's doing this and has no qualifications nor any business to audit, evaluate, or judge my children. I'm just asking, and as I think we all are, like I said, the board has, you guys didn't make the mandate. We're just asking that you stand up for us, stand up for our children. Period. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Frye. Our next speaker is Ms. Tanya Hess. Ms. Hess, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Oh yeah, Tanya Hess, 27 Main Street, Amo. I have a senior here at Northern Lebanon. He goes to CTC and I have a junior, he has an IEP due to Asperger's. I just want to give you the definition of segregation. It is the act, action or state of setting someone or something apart from people or things are being separated. The segregation began Friday, the 10th, for my son James, who was told about noon, he wasn't on the list and to go to the auditorium. Apparently there was a list of kids who didn't hand in forms. My kids have handed in forms, all of which have been denied, but nobody has told me why. I told him to go to the auditorium and I will call the school. The secretary said she was told to say mask or go home. When asked why parents weren't notified, she couldn't answer me this. Today, yesterday, Monday, I got a call from Ms. Wimmer, I believe her name is, the assistant principal. She said they were moved to a different room. I told her I didn't want my kids separated and that they were not sick, so I will not leave them at home to the school to give me a fine. Today I got another call that they were being separated again. Again, I told her I don't want my children separated. They were put in the ISS room. If anybody don't know what that is, that's in-school suspension. And their phones were taken, which, okay, you're in school. I guess you don't need your phone out, but the minute they walked in the class, give me your phone, you're in school suspension. I called Ms. Wimmer. She said that's the ISS rule. I said, but they're not suspended. She said, no, they're not. So I asked, why were they in there? Again, she couldn't answer this. Since Friday, this school has bullied and segregated and pushed my boys to mask up. Whether someone, they've been having different people ask them to wear it. They've put them in ISS even though they're not suspended and now they're taking their phones away so they can't communicate with me what's going on. If you don't realize how wrong it is for a kid to be pulled from class, made to sit in ISS and be segregated over a mask, then you being on a school board, which is supposed to care about the children, is the wrong place for you to be. I am asking you to care about the children, not, not your images, not your funding for your projects, but to actually care about our kids. I am asking you to keep the mask optional plan you had the first day of school where all the kids were smiling, learning, and together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Hess. Our next five speakers this evening are Mr. Nathan Simpson, Ms. Lacey Simpson, Ms. Stephanie Miller, Ms. Martha Blau, and Mrs. Rachel England.
Nathan Simpson, 317 Shepherd Street, Jonestown. I'm going to start with how the week's been going for me. I got home yesterday. My oldest daughter was in tears. She didn't have a mask on and she felt like this teacher was completely singling her out throughout the whole day. It took hours to calm her down, could not get her homework done. She had a volleyball game that night. We eventually got her to a volleyball game. All right, we get over to the volleyball game. There's tons of different schools there. It's over in Palmyra, no mask, no nothing like that. She enjoyed herself. She had fun. This whole mask thing is destroying these kids. I feel so bad. Right now, we're in a process of looking into charter schools. We're looking into private schools. We broke the news to our daughter today. Our daughter's today in tears, running to her bedroom. Daddy, I don't want to go to different school. Daddy, I don't want to go to a different school. We're losing choices. We don't have our freedom. We don't have anything anymore. The government's taking it away. Everyone's taking everything away from us. We're parents. We love our children. We love all children. And it's just sad to hear these stories of my self-experience and what's going on and everything else. So basically, we're getting forced to try to figure out a way to get these medical exemption forms filled out. Trying to find a loophole in it, trying to find anything to figure out a way to get these things through so our kids don't have to suffer with a mask on all day and can't figure out why what's going on. So my question today to you is, I received, I've been reaching out to people, figuring out what to do. I'm going to soccer games and instead of, instead of talking to the soccer parents about soccer and how school's going, first thing everyone's attacking is, what are you putting on exemption form? Did it work for you? Was this going to work? Is that going to work? What's going to work? You know, my kids come home from school. Did you get bullied today by a teacher? Did, did, did someone tell you that you have to put a mask on? I'm not even asking them, how did you enjoy your day? What did you learn today? That's horrible, absolutely horrible. Going back to the exemption forms, I'm reaching out to a bunch of different connections, talking to different schools, talking to different boards, talking to different people, lawyers, doctors, trying to figure out the best way to figure all this stuff out. Not getting too far, almost getting to the point where I'm ready to just say, throw the towel in, I'm taking my kids out. And I get a text message last night of a list of last names that got exempt medically. Some of them were in administration, some were on the board here today and some were on the school board previous. So I'm just wondering what they put on their paper to get them exempt. Really wondering. At first, when I got the news and I looked at my text message, I was angry. I was upset. I actually immediately called my attorney. He didn't answer the phone, but he called me back 30 minutes later. Communicated him about what I should say today about it. He told me, leave names out for now. He told me leave names out for now. So no names are going to be let, be talked about tonight.
30 seconds.
So throughout the day, I kept stirring on this, stirring on this, thinking on this. You know, if we have the answer, what we could put on these forms, that's our answer right now. Let us know what to put on these forms. Because obviously, there's a way to get around this. And like someone said on the board before, it's a game. This is a game. Well, I'm ready to play the game and I'm super competitive and I do not like to lose.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Simpson. Our next speaker this evening is Ms. Lacy Simpson. Ms. Simpson, please state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Lacy Simpson, 317 Shepherd Street, Jonestown. Um, I'm a graduate of Northern Lebanon. I'm a COVID survivor. Obviously, this is anxiety for me. If it's not anxiety for you guys, I don't know what is, okay? You guys are affecting our kids in the wrong way. Mental health, anxiety. I mean, I know kids right now that are going off the edge about this. Masks are like harmful to your health. It's lack of oxygen. Labels. You want to talk about labels? I have an IEP, okay? What's the difference between me and you? Nothing, okay? It's a label. It's a label. I called around to other schools to put my kids into another school. You know what? They asked me, does your kid have a 504 or an IEP? Well, let me tell you what, none of my kids have an IEP or a 504, and so I can't use that to my benefit, which is horrible to use. That is a horrible excuse. Shame on you guys for even asking that. I have two kids that, you know, I got denials back from our solicitor. Thank you very much. Um, yes. So now we have a new form out. Hopefully, we can find something that works. One of my kids gets migraines, so on, so on, so on. She's still in review. Hopefully hers passes because let me tell you what, the anxiety is crazy in our house. I have four girls. Like, come on now. This mask thing, it is like our governor, what he's doing to us, it's going to be masks, vaccines. If we don't do that, that's where he's hurting us, okay? If, if the adults aren't going to get the vaccines, he's going to go to the kids. If the kids don't get him, he's going to turn off our electricity nets. He's going to take our guns. We're going to lose all parent rights. As a parent, I should be able to decide healthcare and educational rights for my kids. And you guys are stopping that. Like, I don't know why this can't be optional. A lot of schools are doing it. Obviously, you guys made your decision last week, though. That's what I feel. From what I heard last week from this board, you guys made your decision, okay? I don't think this is going to be overturned anytime soon. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to say that, but I don't think I'm going to be sticking around for that. I mean, if you take a charter school, take 10 kids out of this school, put them in charter school, that's $12,000, $12,000 a kid. That's $120,000 you'll be paying out if you guys want to do the math. A lot of people in this community are talking about that. There's not going to be any kids for our new school. I thought my kids would graduate from Northern Lebanon, but I have to make the right decisions for my kids. So, um, that's all I have to say. I don't even have four minutes worth.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Simpson. Our next speaker is Ms. Stephanie Miller. Do we have Ms. Miller? Okay. Check on her at the end. Um, our next speaker then is Ms. Martha Blau. Do we have Ms. Blau? And then we have Mrs. Rachel England. Mrs. England, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
My name is Rachel England, and I live at 211 West Market Street in Jonestown. First of all, thank you for your selfless dedication to our community and our district. I say selfless because I know this job certainly isn't one that gets you well-liked, as you can tell, or famous, or have, has any good perks. None. You must do it because you care about our kids and you want to serve our community. And I have to say, you have done a fantastic job over the last tumultuous year, and I commend you for the way that you have handled so many difficult decisions during COVID. Thank you. I would like to speak to the difficulty our community is having with a mask mandate exemption form. And probably if I had known what you were going to say, Gary, I might not be reading this, but I'm going to go ahead and read it anyway. Truly, our governor's order is essentially taking away the elected decision-making power from board members across Pennsylvania and has made a lose-lose scenario for you. Here is what a portion of the mandate states directly from the website, and I know you know this, but I'm just going to read it for sake of what I'm going to say. "A school entity must provide reasonable accommodations for individuals who state they have a medical condition, mental health condition, or disability that makes it unreasonable for the person to maintain a face covering. A school entity should not, A, enforce face covering requirements when there is an exception under Section 3, or if it is unsafe to do so. B, restrain, use force, or physically remove teachers, children, students, staff, or visitors who refuse to comply with this order when it would not otherwise be legal to do so. C, violate other laws, including state and federal anti-discrimination laws," end quote. Now consider these two recent statements. Number one, the CDC says, quote, "The 21% lower incidence in schools that required mask use among students was not statistically significant compared with schools where mask use was optional," end quote. Number two, Dr. Fauci's boss, NIH Director Francis Collins, said just a few weeks ago that mask mandates in schools were more anecdotally based than data-based. He said, "There is no data, quote, 'showing that these kids are at greater risk of hospitalization or illness of serious sort from taking their mask off,'" end quote. So, the exemption form that Northern Lebanon has adopted eventually requires, I, we know it doesn't now, but the physician's signature, and therefore has gone way above and beyond the requirements that the Pennsylvania order states. That coupled with the fact that the mask mandate is clearly emotion-based and not fact-based continues this frustrating trend of lose-lose scenarios, only this time for the parents. I understand that I have not been in the executive sessions and I'm not privy to the information that our solicitor has given you, but we need to know why our district has chosen a more difficult route of dealing with this mandate when compared to other area school districts. As has been said, this really isn't about masks. It's about allowing parents to decide what is best for their children. I would never dream of demanding that any family take masks off their children if they feel it is medically necessary or important for them to wear.
30 seconds.
I would expect the same kind of consideration and respect to be reciprocated for my family as well. In conclusion, please do not make your choices for our district based on fear. Have courage, directors. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I want you to know that I continue to pray for you all during this difficult time.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. England. Our next speakers this evening are Ariana Day, Ms. Becky Nichols, Ms. Amber Baumgartner, Chava Yurkonis, and Ms. Michelle Fisher.
Okay, so, uh, my name is Ariane Day, 47 Sweetbriar Lane. I just kind of want to give you a bit of a reality check for today. So in our little group, our little community, just based on the people I've had some interaction with, 36 families have left Northern Lebanon School District to go to charter, cyber homeschooling, whatever. And based on what you decide to do with this mask mandate, there's at least 24 more that are planning to do something different with their children. So I just want to give you that heads up when we're talking about liability and things like that. I get you're in a difficult situation. I really do. Another reality check is based on what transpired for many families here on Friday. You're probably going to see some liability coming down through the PA Human Relations Commission. So that's also something to keep in mind, too, when you're thinking about where your courage is, really, is, is where that's at. We, as parents, we are seeing other districts make different decisions, like a lot of people have been stating. And we do want to know why. We do not understand why Northern Lebanon is making the decisions that they are. We understand that solicitor is giving you all advice, and we thank the solicitor for looking out for this district. But there's also other solicitors that are giving their districts other advice. So what is it that they know that we do not know here? That they're, they have the ability to come to the decision that they have to make these masks optional. The parents make the decisions for their children. So I would like to ensure that you have had the opportunity to ask the solicitor a few questions, mainly is, have any Pennsylvania school board members ever been found to be individually liable for a policy decision that you've made? Second thing, has any Pennsylvania school administrator, so superintendent, et cetera, ever faced administrative sanctions such as suspension of certification or loss of certifications for carrying out school board policy decisions? Has a school district in Pennsylvania ever faced legal action over COVID-19 exposure? Or has any school district in Pennsylvania ever faced legal action over any kind of virus exposure, for that matter? Sovereign immunity provides very broad protections to schools, school board members, and employees. So where is your sovereign protection? Are there exemptions to sovereign immunity that would allow a lawsuit to proceed over non-intentional virus exposure? These are just some questions that we want to make sure that you've been able to ask the solicitor and the solicitor has provided to you because you do have sovereign immunity. We have trust, you are elected officials. We have trusted you to make the best decisions for our children. Another question, have school districts been sued in the past for failing to recognize medical exemptions for not attempting to provide equal educational services to students? You had students literally segregated on Friday. That is a huge issue. That is something that the mandate itself stated you could not do.
30 seconds.
So at this point, a lot of us parents want to actually ask the board if you would consider getting a second opinion from another solicitor, and might I suggest Eric Winters or Chad Witschney?
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Day. Our next speaker is Ms. Becky Nichols.
Good evening. I did submit that I was going to talk, and then I was going.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you please state your name and address?
I guess so. You can mail me stuff. Rebecca Nicholas, 22. I can't even remember my address because I'm standing up here speechless. 2252 State Route 72, Jonestown, PA 17038. A lot of people have talked about statistics. I don't give a crap about statistics. I give a crap about my kids. My son called me today from the guidance counselor crying. He was an exempt kid, not wearing a mask. Why was he in the guidance counselor's office crying? She pulled up his information. For so can attest to this, my kid is a good kid, right? She pulled up his informa, she pulled up his information, and she said, honey, what is going on? You're, you're a straight A student. Why are you here crying? He didn't want to go to school Monday. Why? He's exempt. You don't have to wear a mask. It's not just the masks. It's not just the kids that are exempt. It's everything. Our kids are so stressed out. These masks are not just a meaning for medical anymore. My three-year-old knows what a mask, mask is. Why should a three-year-old know what a mask is? He's never been in a ball pit at three. These kids are living a different life. Our kids were so happy on the first day of school when they didn't have to wear masks. We're taking so much away from these kids, and I don't care about numbers. I don't care about all that stuff because I know you guys already know the numbers. You guys know all that information. What I care about at the end of the day is being the best parent that I can be. And I'm sorry, but if I would have tried two years ago to send my child to school with a mask on, I can guarantee that children and youth would have been called on me because he would have been wearing a mask. Every situation is different, and I think it needs to be looked at that way. There are some kids that can wear a mask that it doesn't affect them at all. Sadly, my son has asthma. My son gets headaches. He was at the school nurse last year. So there's a history there. So maybe my exemption will go through. I don't know. But this morning, when I got the phone call, I was in the grocery store and I had to calm down my 11-year-old son that was crying to me on the phone, begging to come home. He loves school. He loves his friends. But he wants to come home. Why? Because he doesn't feel safe here. Why should a child not feel safe in school? Why? Children should want to come to school to learn. My child was one of the children that was put in the auditorium. And he was scared. So guess what? I have 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
So guess what? He put on a mask because he's 11. And he's a good kid, and he wants to listen to what his peers have to say. But he also doesn't want to come home with headaches and not feeling good and be pushed into an auditorium. I want my child to graduate from Northern Lebanon. I want him to graduate with his friends, but guess what? We're looking into charter schools right now.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Nichols. Our next speaker is Ms. Amber Baumgartner. Ms. Baumgartner, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
My name is Amber Baumgartner. I reside at 247 Hallmondale Road. I was originally going to be part of the group that was going to read the Eric Winters' legal statement. However, I guess we're not doing that, so the whole thing, so I are part of it. So I'm going to read the email that I emailed you guys this morning. I didn't get a reply back. I know you're probably swamped with things right now, but I'm just going to read that. "So my husband and I are upset and frustrated. We are angry about what is happening in our country on a national level and a state level, and now currently the local level. Our liberties are being taken away and our freedoms are being tested. I have two daughters, one 11th grade, one in 8th grade. They wanted to do the V3 program last year because they did not want to go to school all day with a mask on, and that would have only been two days a week. They were so happy to hear that our school board decided to allow masks to be an option for this current year. Of course, that all changed on September 7th, when the governor's mandate went into effect, and we received the email from Northern Lebanon to enforce the mandate unless you had a medical exemption form signed by a parent and had a doctor's signature. May I ask why the doctor's signature was added to the governor's mandate? Is that not illegal to add anything to a mandate?" I know you, you said that you have changed that. "My daughters brought home the exemption forms that first day, and I filled them out that night. My girls handed them in the next day. So they both believed that they had done what they needed to do and had their parents' signature to enjoy their freedom of their choosing to not wear a mask and to not breathe in carbon dioxide all day, which of course is not the way our bodies were designed to function as we have been taught in school. Needless to say, my daughter, who is in 8th grade, was surprised by what happened on Friday afternoon. I asked her to type up her experience, and I quote, "I walked into my seventh period class and sat down with my things. My teacher told me to take my things and go down to the auditorium." I was confused and I asked her if she knew why. She said that I was the only one without a mask on. I told her that I turned in my form and she said I wasn't on the list. I again told her that I turned in my form. She said she would check the list again, but she didn't think I was on it. She checked the list and told me I wasn't on it. So I walked down to the auditorium with all my things still without a mask on. I was afraid and not sure what was happening. I was already having a rough day and now this? Other students were getting seated and as one of them sat, said to sit every other seat, so I did. Dr. Ebert was standing at the front of the room. Students were coming in, almost everyone without a mask on. I still wasn't sure what was going to happen. I was nervous I was going to get in trouble." And like, I believe it was Becky that previously stated, my daughter is straight A student. She has never gotten in trouble at school before. We waited for most of the students that were coming in and Dr. Ebert read a paper two times that said something like this. I'll just skip what you already know what you read.
Thirty seconds.
So I put a mask on because I was scared of getting in trouble and went back to class. I really wanted, I really didn't want to miss one of my most important classes, honors geometry. So I'll skip a little bit. She got hot and her breathing got heavy. Later she had pain in her abdomens and underneath her ribs. And it continued through later in the day as well. First of all, we are very disappointed in how this was handled on Friday and this is not even a little bit.
That's time.
You guys have it in an email, so I hope you read it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Baumgartner. Our next speaker is Chava Yerkonos. Yeah. Ms. Yerkonos, please state your name and address before speaking.
I hope I still get my four minutes. Okay, I'm going to read the letter from our Lebanon County District of Attorney. Dear citizens of Lebanon County, this letter was dated September 7th, 2021. Last week, Governor Wolf issued yet another mandate. His orders require all children in school, regardless of whether it's public or private entity, wear masks. This latest edict was a bit of a surprise, given his prior promises to leave decisions to unmask up to the individual districts themselves. His orders lacked clarity in both its rules and enforce enforcement methods. Over the weekend, my office received countless inquiries from parents. They remain frustrated, confused, and scared of a possible criminal consequence if they refuse compliance with our governor and his list of ever-changing rules. Our citizens need and deserve answers. The Office of the District Attorney will not authorize an arrest, criminal citation, or criminal consequence for a parent's simple refusal to mask his or her child at school. Your local law enforcement stands with you in these trying times. Our parents deserve the respect to raise their children and make decisions as they believe best. Our schools deserve the respect to function as they believe appropriate for their districts and most importantly, the families. Put simply, my office is returning the individual's right to choose to both parents and school districts as a whole. Our office and the law enforcement community know that parents, the school districts, the students, and the teachers are all struggling. Our thoughts and prayers remain with all of you. Respectfully, Pierre Hess Graff. And I must say, I'm, I've talked this over with my 11-year-old son, who is also almost a straight A student. He is attending his first year of middle school here. And he will not be wearing a mask. He got temporarily exempt from it. But like a lot of parents have said to you, he came home last year with headaches, trouble breathing. My child is not an anxious child, but when he wears this mask, he feels anxious, claustrophobic. He has trouble concentrating in school. He doesn't need an IEP or 504. But this mask causes him to have trouble absorbing things. He still gets good grades, but he doesn't want to come to school if he has to wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Yerkonos. Our next speaker is Ms. Michelle Fisher. Ms. Fisher, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Michelle Fisher, 1869 Luxbridge Road. So I signed up planning to read some official document, but I'm actually really glad the plans changed because I'm not a fancy person. I'm not a big words person. You just meet me and you meet me. Like there's nothing, I like to say I'm not special, but you know what? I am special. My kids are special. But what I'm confident in is the choices that I make for my family and myself. What I want to say right now comes from my heart and my experiences as a parent of five. I have three in public school currently. I attended back-to-school night in two different elementary schools. And I think it's fair to assume that most of the parents sitting in this auditorium were there as well and witnessed the same thing that I did. Our kids went back excited to see their friends, knowing that they were going to be normal again, if we even know what to call that. But what I observed in these classes of 15 to 20 children, one, maybe two, parents and children chose to wear their mask. That's less than 7% in these classes. So the first week of school, they all go back and they love it. Again, same statistics or same numbers. My kids came home happy, smiling, like excited to be back in school again because it was normal. My kindergartner gets a start at normal school year as well too. And then she was not even two days of school and things changed. But she was able to focus on learning, making friends, and just seeing other kids smile. My opinion is that the number of maskless children in the first week of school speaks volumes to what we want, what the people want in this school. So what do our kids want? They want to focus on friendships, growing up and living life as normal as possible. I want my children to love school again, to focus on learning, not who's wearing a mask or not wearing one. Or to feel singled out because they're the only one that chooses not to. And I would say that referring to my 10-year-old son who came home and shared with me that night last Tuesday, that his teacher made a statement about following the rules. My son's a rule follower. He doesn't get in trouble. But she looked directly at him because he wasn't following the rules. And this of course upsets me as a parent. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Fisher. Our next five speakers this evening are Mrs. Janet Ebersole, Mr. John Shireman, Mr. Tyler Longenecker, Mrs. Shen Kreiser, and Mr. Michael Wenger. Mrs. Ebersole, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Janet Ebersole and I reside at 683 Roble Road, Lebanon. I would like to briefly address the board concerning the mask mandate. There is a much bigger issue at stake here than whether to mask or not to mask. And that is the continuing loss of autonomy that is being experienced as a school district and as parents. This is a slippery slope that we are on. I liken what is happening to the fable of the boiling frog. The frog was placed in tepid water and the heat slowly turned up until the frog had boiled to death. Our parental rights are slowly being stripped away. Today, there is a mask mandate. What will it be tomorrow? Last week, we heard that our children are watching to see what we will do. Yes, they are watching. Are we going to model for them that we are powerless and have to accept whatever we are told to do without question? Or are we going to model what it looks like to pursue justice and stand for what is right? When we are mandated to do something that lacks common sense and truth, are we going to show them how to respectfully challenge the mandate? Are we going to show them that we are willing to put in the hard work to stand and fight for truth and freedom? I pray that is the legacy that we will leave for our children. One where we were willing to fight for them and for their freedom. One where we fought for their health and safety and where we stepped out of our comfort zone in order to do the right thing. Our children were entrusted to us and we need to take back our God-given responsibility. I am in favor of exploring all options in order to take back our right to choose. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Ebersole. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. John Shireman. Mr. Shireman, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
John Shireman, 21 Vista Drive here in Fredericksburg. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. I know you've gone through some tough times now, but I apologize, ma'am. I am a stats guy, so I have stats. Since January 1st of 2020 through September 8th of this year, 412 kids unfortunately died from COVID. 412. 55,352 other causes, other kids caught, kids died from other causes. So the total deaths of kids under 18 are 55,352. The COVID deaths make up 0.7% of that. There's 73 million kids under 18 in this country. It leads to an actual death rate of 0.0056%. So what does this mean? So look at the total numbers. 10,000 kids die every year in motor vehicle involved accidents, whether they walk into school, whether they're playing on their bikes, whatever, playing in the street. 10,000 kids. It's 50 times the COVID deaths. 1,000 kids suffocate. 1,000 kids die in fires and, and burn victims. 600 kids per year drink something in their house and die. COVID doesn't crack the top 15. Name one point in history where we took a group of problems and we focused on the one on the bottom and not the biggest problem. We should be focusing on street safety or the thousand kids that drown every year, swimming safety, water safety, not focusing on masks. Like I said, COVID doesn't crack the top 15 and things that kill our kids. It just doesn't make sense to me and it shouldn't make sense to you folks either. I understand being fearful of lawsuits. The definition of courage is doing what is right in spite of the fear. So please do what's right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Shireman. Our next speaker is Mr. Tyler Longenecker. Mr. Longenecker, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
My name is Tyler Longenecker. I live at 246 Mountville Drive. So like a lot said, I'm just going to cut to the chase and I'm really nervous and I'm, you know, excited about things and stuff like that, but I really think this is a mess. I think it's going to get worse, you know, if we don't really start standing up. So what, like me personally as a parent, like I don't want cyber charter at all. Like I want Northern Lebanon to stand up and start kicking some ass. You know, let's get moving here. Okay. Like I don't think it's, I don't think it's that hard. I don't think, not, not that it's not hard at all, but you know, we can have courage. Everybody here is talking about courage, like courage, courage, courage. That's what we want, you know? It seems pretty unified to me. Like I don't see like a divided community here. You know, we seem pretty unified. So I know we don't necessarily have the votes and we got to work on things and I think there's people in groups like working behind the scenes to try to make this come together. But just for me personally, like cyber charter is out. Northern Lebanon succeeding has to happen. We're not going to lose it, you know? Like I think just like on a lighter note, maybe like, I think I'm probably like the most losingest Northern Lebanon player like in our history. Okay. I mean, we lost like basketball games and football games. It was just like this big blur of like losses. And just getting pounded and, you know, hammered. You know what I mean? I only weighed 125 pounds, you know? It was crazy. I mean, it was, it was very intense, you know? And, you know, but it took courage, you know? And every day like these kids go to school and we ask them to have courage. We ask them to go out and wrestle and have courage and do it. But then like we're, you know, behind the scenes, like, oh man, like the governor's a weird dude. I mean, like, let's just put it to bed. This guy's weird. I don't know what it is with him. So like I'm going to get off track and I was going to lose my way here. Like I've just been thinking about this all, all day. But like, I think it's pretty unanimous. We want you guys to work at this. Like if we're not going to work against you, we know what you're facing. Like we're not stupid. Okay. And just on all sides of the debate, we like across the whole nation, like everybody's got to stop calling each other stupid. Okay. I don't know if that's a result of Facebook or what, but this is, it's a tough debate. Like it's a good debate. You know, it's a shame that people are getting this disease and COVID and so forth. But you know, we can, we can do things here. Like we can work with this. We can make it happen. Like Northern Lebanon succeeding can happen. Okay. Nobody's going to stand for this going downhill. That's for sure. Like we've made our mark in the sand. Like we're standing up. Okay. And we want you guys to do the same. So thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Longenecker. Our next speaker this evening is Mrs. Shen Kreiser. Mrs. Kreiser, please state your name and address before speaking and you have four minutes.
Good evening. Shen Kreiser, 10118 Jonestown Road, Grantville. So I just want to go over a little bit of a, maybe a civics lesson here tonight. One of the unique things about Pennsylvania is the fact that we're a Commonwealth. That's the reason that we have a school board. People move here from other states and are very confused by our form of government. The great thing about the Commonwealth system is that the local rule is where government starts and where government ends for the most part in Pennsylvania. Commonwealth means that the government is based on the common consent of the people. It's the reason that we have 3,500 plus municipalities in Pennsylvania. Each with their own rules and regulations when it comes to where people can put a warehouse, how you can build a house, what land you can develop. We have 500 different school districts in Pennsylvania. There isn't another state in the country that operates like Pennsylvania. You're here because you're the school board because the government system of Pennsylvania was set up so that control rested with the local people because they knew what was best for their community. We don't apply, we don't let the state take where our rights when it comes to other matters. You know, union township makes its own rules. East Hanover Township decides that they want to limit development. Union Township approves to let warehouses come in because they, you know, have a convenient location for the warehouses. We don't let the state come in and tell Union Township where to build warehouses. We follow this Commonwealth form of government in every other fact of local life. I've worked in emergency management for a long time and even state law for emergencies says that all emergencies state start and end locally. We don't have statewide mandates in effect anymore, except for this one, when it comes to COVID. There's no more disaster declaration for COVID. People decided that they wanted to end that when the governor was taken away. The legislator said that they must approve any future disaster declarations. We have moved to the recovery phase of COVID for the most part. There, most of the counties have closed out their incidents for COVID. They don't have restrictions anymore. They are returning to normalcy and are leaving things up to be managed on a local level. And that's where we are in this emergency situation. Yes, the COVID or the pandemic is still continuing on, but again, we're to local management of this, of the emergency at this point. And so it doesn't really make sense to have the governors or the Department of Health mandate just for K-12 schools. There's one school district in particular, they recognize the fact that they have to apply for, they have to comply with the order and the mandate. And so all they simply had their residents do was fill out a Google form if they wanted an exception for their children to the face covering mandate. There wasn't any controversy over it. The board simply said that we believe that local control should rest with the school board. We would like to have the opportunity to continue to follow our health and safety rule plan that we approved. But the governor has this mandate that we must comply with. And so they simply said, we will use the governor's words of an exception with, to our benefit. And a parent will take the responsibility and affirm that their child meets Section 3 of the exemption.
Thirty seconds.
And they will, they fill out a Google form and that is the end of it. And masks are optional in their district for the most part, as long as you fill out an exception form. So like I said, you have options. No. I think what some of the previous speakers said, you know, the community, it's pretty obvious what we're here, what we want you guys to do. So just remember that you're elected officials and Pennsylvania is a Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Kreiser. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Michael Wenger. Mr. Wenger, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
My name is Michael Wenger, 2395 Corey Road. And I have been at NL for 11 years and this is my 12th year at NL. And I have been as loyal as they come when it comes to this school district. But at this point, I am done with the, with the masks. I am done. I'm fed up. The fact that I cannot get a simple right to to adults that I can, after school, I can go to Walmart and masks are optional. can go to Walmart, masks are optional, I can go to the school football game and sit in a, a student section with 50-plus kids in it without a mask, but I can't go through the day without a mask. It's, it's really sad, but, but if you don't, you'll get sent down to the auditorium, get bullied by whoever's in here, and it's just really sad. I, from day one of coming to this school district, I've been told to be respectful to students, staff, teachers, everyone, and now it's coming back to be you guys not following through with it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wanger. Our next five speakers this evening are Mr. Sam Wanger, or wait, oh, okay. Mr. Sam Wanger, Mr. Clovis Crane, Reverend Troy Williams, Ms. Amanda Showers, and Ms. Stephanie Miller, and Mrs. Martha Blau. Mr. Wanger, please state your name and address, you have four minutes.
Sam Wanger, 2395 Quarry Road, Lebanon. Last week, a board member stated, I quote, "We don't exist in our own rights when it comes to public health," end quote. Well, I disagree. My rights don't stop because of your feelings, and I suggest you get a copy of the Constitution and read it slowly. I am not responsible for the health, I'm not responsible for your health and you are not responsible for mine. We make choices for ourselves, not for one another. We take risks every day much greater than contracting a virus with a 99.9% chance of recovery. During the last week, I've heard and witnessed a few things about certain board members. I have heard of a board member that stated he would vote along with the governor and then next day was witnessed at the bus stop surrounded by a group of children not wearing a mask. I've personally seen a group, a group of, a Facebook post by a teacher that my son currently has stating that Jesus would wear a mask and a comment by a current board member that stated, and I quote, "And bitch slap a lot of folks," end quote. I would highly suggest those two individuals find a reverend to speak to because obviously neither one of them know anything about Jesus. I've heard, I've heard of people in the, in the office reading the exemption papers out loud to each other and mocking the contents of those exemptions, highly illegal. Does this board and these teachers and administration think that us parents are a joke? I graduated from NL in 1999. This district has not gotten any better in the last 22 years. NL is ranked second worst in Lebanon County, so it's not exactly a privilege to attend any school in this district. We all know what NL has been in, in the news for the last few years and other than sports was not exactly on the positive side. Nobody that is part of this district should be mocking anybody about anything. This last week has shown the district's true colors bullying and harassing parents and students over a mask, seriously a mask. I can speak for my two children, but I'm sure others feel the same way. My children, my two children no longer want to attend school here. It's become a fight and I can see the look on their eyes before they head out the door in the morning. I understand the state has between, has you between a rock and a hard place, but don't for one second think us parents don't have options. We have plenty of options, as some have already exercised those options, more will follow. We have done our homework and researched on the mandate, not a law, a mandate, an illegal mandate from a lame duck governor and his lame duck administration bullying PA districts into complying. Sounds a lot like tyranny to me. One thing I can say as a parent is I will not be bullied or threatened into making a decision I don't agree with for my children. I will not be intimidated by the governor, by the Department of Health, by the Department of Education, nor by the NL administration, your resource officer, or your school board. I will not apply any, I will not allow any of you to bully my children either. My children, my responsibility, nobody else's, no matter how many mandates they try to put on us. If we can't trust this district to make decisions based on actual science, not the science we see in the media or information from people with agenda, then we have no reason to send our children to your schools anymore. We know this is not our last fight with this governor and are prepared for more. We are, we as parents are working together with parents of other districts, some other districts are conforming, what is the, what is the difference? Why this district not stand up for its students and taxpayers? We all have a good idea why and we know the truth always comes out eventually. I ask that you vote to go back to optional masks and nobody has, else has to make tough decisions of what to do with our children's future. If you do not, we know where you stand and will, and will be forced to exercise those options I previously mentioned. Science has shown that masks do, do more harm than good in children. We know that the only effective masks are N95s, not your blue surgical masks that stay on the box, they will not prevent any diseases or virus transmissions, neither will your decorative flower ones either. This district is segregating students to the auditorium, which is illegal, and refusing an education to students who don't conform, again, illegal. You as voting members of the NL school board have a choice to make. You can vote with the parents and the students and against tyrannical governor and have the community and us parents and students rally around you and stand with you, or you can vote against the parents, taxpayers, and students, then you will have us parents, students, and taxpayers standing against you. Choose your battles wisely. We understand this is a tough decision, so are all decisions in life, but we do it every day. As parents, we trust you, make good positive choices for our children. So far, most of us have not had anything negative to say about your decisions. I do commend on how you've handled things up to now. I have never felt the need to attend a meeting until last week, but now it affects how I raise my children and nobody, I'll say it again, nobody knows how to raise my kids better than me.
That's time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wanger. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Clovis Crane.
Wow, that was pretty good.
Mr. Crane, please state your name and address.
This is stupid, by the way. Jesus healed lepers with the touch of his hand. He wouldn't wear masks. Just a little quick story, Rosie, my kindergartner didn't want to wear a mask on Monday. She told them to call their daddy to pick her up. They, they said, they said, put on a mask and everything will be okay. She came home and was very mad. Daddy, right? I saw football practice coming in. Hundreds of our children were out there playing football, no masks, they were huddled right next to each other, sweaty, nasty, and you, you're gonna tell me that those same kids can play outside next, shoulder to shoulder and that that's okay and they can come inside and it's not okay? That's complete insanity. There, there's no, there's no, the same thought that that, that that's okay? By the way, to the masked members, which most of you are tonight, I still can't understand who's talking, when you're talking, which one's talking. It was a problem last week and now, thank goodness, I've been here for a second week and I, I understand it better, who talks and who's supposed to talk when they talk. But I, I also noticed that some of you are wearing the same mask that you wore last week, like, those things are dirty. There's no way that those are clean. That's ridiculous. I worked with two children today at 1:00 PM who were kicked out of school for not wearing a mask. I got news for you, both those kids are very, very strong kids. Besides being tough, they were willing to stand up for what they think was right. Those kids are strong. Their, their risk is extremely minimal for a potential problem and it's completely irrational to make those children wear a mask. Just a little informative piece, for thousands of years, different groups of people have masked other groups of people to enslave. These groups have learned that when they mask other groups, those groups get the feel, feeling of, lose feeling of self and individuality, and those people can more easily be manipulated. And that has been proven thousands and thousands of years of time, that other groups mask other people to enslave them. I'm not saying that that's what's happening here, but I don't want our children to lose individuality and feeling of self, which is happening. The contact, the continued masking will significantly forever change the direction in which this generation will interact forever. This is not the environment I want my child to live in or my children to live in, and it is not the manner in which I want my children to learn. When the risk to the mask is, of the children is so low, it's insanity to mask the mask for the mental health, for our use, to have them in masks. Please consider mask choice. I'm not against anyone who feels that they need to mask or doing what they feel is right for their child, but don't tell me that I have to mask my child when they're perfectly healthy and, quite frankly, my family has all went through COVID already, so we have antibodies. And I'm not against somebody getting vaccinated, both my parents are vaccinated, both my in-laws are vaccinated, I have no problem with it, but when it's not right for your family, it's not right for your family, but to tell me that I've gotta do something that I don't feel right, is right? That's, that's not right. And let's quit catering to the minority of the community. It seems like, it sure seems to me like the majority of us in here don't wanna wear a mask because we don't think that it's right. You know, let's start catering to the majority of our community. It's, it's our community that runs this situation and we, we talked about a Commonwealth, this is a Commonwealth. You guys are the ones that have to stand up for us because we can't do it and we're imploring you. All of us here have implored you, please stand up.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Crane. Our next speaker is Reverend Troy Williams. Reverend Williams, please state your name and address before speaking, you have four
Troy Williams, 79 Snoopire Lane. I was asked originally to come and offer another prayer and by no means was it my intent last week to set any kind of precedence or make this a habit, but quite frankly, I can think of no better way during this trifle time in our community and where we can find answers, solace, and unity than through prayer. But before I offer any kind of prayer, I do want to address two issues stemming from last week's meeting. Mr. Messinger, thank you for clearing up the idea with the, the medical exemption forms, but I know that there's a discussion that's going to take place, so I implore you to consider the many medical professionals that have determined not to complete these forms, rather they're simply providing a diagnosis and they're not offering any real explanation as to how these diagnoses can be affected or can, can affect the child wearing a mask seven hours a day, five days a week. Please also consider that parents know their children the best. Parents know what their children can tolerate and they know what their children, when their children are overwhelmed. And as was mentioned last week, some families may even have different solutions for each of their children simply because each child may have different needs. Second, I am very saddened that this board voted not to discuss possible alternate solutions to the face covering mandate. As the elected officials, you spent great time and effort to develop a safety plan that fit the needs of Northern Lebanon School District, and with one signature, you allowed an overreaching executive strip you of your authority and power. As a Christian, I have a source that which provides me guidance when making decisions, that's the Holy Bible. As elected officials, you have a source that which provides you guidance when making decisions. When elected, you took an oath to support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that you would do so with fidelity. While it is wise and prudent to seek advice from counsel, your solicitor, you are the ultimate authority and your responsibility lies in upholding your oath of office and the concerns of the community in which you represent. According to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Article 1, Section 26, and I quote, "Neither the Commonwealth nor any political subdivision thereof shall deny to any person the enjoyment of any civil right, nor discriminate against any person in the exercise of any civil right," unquote. One of those rights is found in Article 1, Section 3, which states in part, quote, "No human authority can, in any case whatever, control or interfere with the rights of, with the rights of conscience," unquote. By no means am I a legal scholar, nor do I have the ability to properly argue this case, but I hope that at least I triggered some curiosity in your minds as to how you might be able to better support your students and their families. You owe it to your students and their families to at least investigate how you can restore your authority as well as the rights of conscience to parents, something that other school districts across this Commonwealth are already doing. It saddened me, it saddens me that you failed to at least try. And, and as, and as, and as Wes said last week, after investigating possible options, you could very well decide not to do anything, but at least you would have tried and at least you'd have done your due diligence, which is all I could ever ask you to do. And with that, I ask, I offer a prayer, that your hearts and minds be open. I thank you, I thank the Lord for your group, for this group of men and women that have volunteered their time and efforts to lead and support our students in our community, and I pray that your hearts and minds remain open as you discuss the matters at hand. And I'm thankful that everyone here has been very respectful to everyone's opinions, and I pray that you will just continue to, that we will all continue to come together and be unified in our efforts to educate our children for the betterment of our community and for the glory of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Thank you for your comments, Reverend Williams. Our next speaker is Ms. Amanda Showers. Ms. Showers, please state your name and address, you have four minutes.
Amanda Showers, 112 Maple Drive, Fredericksburg. So I'm just gonna start by saying I have four kids in the district. They are currently in grades two, four, seven, and 10. When this all started, I had a child whose kindergarten year got cut short, a child who missed all of the last year of elementary fun, and a child who misses last year of, last half a year of middle school. With the mask deal going on at that point in time, I left it up to my kids. Do you wanna wear the mask? Do you not wanna wear the mask? I had the capabilities of teaching from home, left it up to them. So with that, all four of them said no masks. I said, okay. So I took the moves to move to the V3. My two little ones were on V3. It was horrible. It was busy work, they weren't learning anything, I knew this. I had to convince my, at the time, six and eight-year-olds to cover their face in masks to sit in a classroom all day long to learn. It was, you know, it's gonna be for a short period of time, we're gonna move on. We all did our, our duties in what we thought was right. The two older ones, my child, my girl, who is currently in seventh grade, has severe anxiety, not documented, runs in the family, not documented, again, so it wouldn't be on the paper to get approved by the solicitor. She has severe anxiety, she will, I was pretty much quarantined the entire time masks were mandated in the stores. That girl did not go shopping to the grocery stores, nowhere, because she would not put a mask, as soon as she had a mask on her face, her face was turning red and she was ready out of panic attack. With that, she stayed home full-time. I made the choice for my oldest to stay home full-time because he is not a good candidate for doing online learning at home while I was at work. So he was forced into staying home where I could monitor his cyber school. This year comes around, my kids are ecstatic, literally ecstatic, like I heard about it all summer, about coming back to school. The masks were relieved, they're ready to go. Because last year, my youngest, who is currently in second grade, I'm gonna try and get through this without crying because it's a real touchy thing for me, he also, anxiety, you can see it there. Any parent who has dealt with anxiety, an actual diagnosis of anxiety as an adult, you can see it in your kid. Not just, you know, I'm nervous about going to school today with a mask on, straight up anxiety, to the point where their whole day is screwed over one thing. That is him, that is Maddox. Last year, with the masks, after I forced them to come to school because it was not doing them any good to be home doing the V3, he, it was on a Santa Shop day, and I remember it vividly, I picked, he cried every single day to go to school. I fought with him, it was terrible. There were days where I had to text this teacher and say, hey, Maddox is crying extra today, let me know if it gets any worse. It was a Santa Shop day, I picked him up from school, he's sitting in my backseat, I go through the bus line at Fredericksburg, I go out front to park to go to the Santa Shop. He is white. I take him out of the car, he's like, mom, I can't breathe, I'm dizzy, takes his mask off, vomits in the school parking lot, and he's having a panic attack about masks. I'm over it, they won't wear them. I am at that point where my children will be in CCA forcibly.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Showers. Our next speaker is Ms. Stephanie Miller. Do we have Ms. Miller here tonight? And then our last speaker would be Ms. Martha Blau. Okay, all right, that concludes our public comments this evening. Then we move on to item 12, that is a discussion item, to discuss the mask exemption form.
I didn't hear the question. Oh, yeah, I, I mean, the, the comments, we're gonna give the board an opportunity to discuss again and to talk. The comments are, are for the board members that vote, obviously. The only thing I have to say about the mask exemption form is what I was talking about earlier in terms of- The only thing I have to say about the mask exemption form is what I was talking about earlier in terms of taking away the medical portion of the form, as was discussed with the board at exec session, and then open it up to discussion on that led by you.
We'll go one at a time around the table, with each board member speaking once before any board member is able to speak once again. And we'll start with Director Marlowe.
Thank you. First, thanks for all the parents that have come out and shared with us your stories. You know, I pulled up one of our board policies today, and it's called the Principles of Governance, and it's one of the things that we commit to as board members as we start this role. And the very first item there, and I think it's there for a reason, is to advocate earnestly. And we're advocating it earnestly for public education. We're called to engage the community by seeking input, building support networks, and generating action. I think what we've seen tonight is an example of that. I think our community has come out and spoke. I think they did it respectfully, so thank you for that. I think many of the emails we've received even this week, again, have been done in a very respectful way, and so I appreciate that for sure. You know, this is a tough topic. I don't think there was anyone here, again, that said they were anti-mask. They're not looking to take that choice away from anyone, and I think we need to listen to that. You know, you know, I've always been taught to, from a business-life standpoint, to, when we make decisions, make them very intentionally. And I think we're all trying to do that. There's an equation that I use, and my kids are probably cringing right now if anybody was watching this, but it's E plus R equals O. And that stands for the event plus your response equals the outcome, or allows you to influence that outcome. We have to think about what the outcome is that we want here. I know many have talked about the fear of litigation, the fear of loss of certificates. And I think those are real fears. I think, you know, those threats have been strong. And so I think we've got teachers that are worried about that. We have administrators that are worried about that. And yet I think there are more risks than those litigations right now. And what I tell you is, in that equation, E plus R equals O, we really need to think about what is that outcome we have. And again, it is about the education, and it is about the children. How do we best do that? There are going to be risks on all sides. We've been given counsel on what that is. And yet, we do need to make that decision. In the end, we need to make that decision. You're getting advice as to what may or may not be a risk for the district. I am not a legal scholar by any means. I have read far more on this than I'd ever want to. And, you know, I believe that risk is probably fairly low, and I believe that because I think we are trying to, we are trying to meet the spirit of what is out there. We have not blatantly tried to work the system. I think we heard many stories tonight of situations, which is what I spoke about last week, which is, you know, a parent who really knows that child, and they are suffering in the situation because they just can't walk it through this process, whether it's because of the legal or because of the physician's requirement or some of the other language in there that's prevailing them. I applaud the board. I know we worked on this in an executive session on Monday, and we were able to agree to adjust that form as Mr. Messinger told us. And that language now says it is not required to have a doctor's note. It still may be required to kind of get it there, which I think is still a challenge for folks. Bottom line is, as this thing has gone on, I feel like it is just not passing the sniff test for us anymore. You know, a year ago, we did it because there were so many unknowns. And yet now, we're sitting here, and we did not make any decision prior to the governor coming out to make any changes. We were all moving forward. Everything was just fine. And yet now, we've changed our minds. Well, I shouldn't say we've changed our minds. The governor has put something on us, put us in a very difficult situation. And over the last couple of weeks, we're all scrambling to try to figure out what should we do here. Even the language in the order, if you read it, and again, I'm not a legal scholar. I'm not a lawyer. But our form is not matching that, and I think that is one of the big frustrations for parents right now, is that the form says, "If you do this, then you may have an exemption." And I said it last week, and I heard a few parents say it this week. You know, there are some of their kids that they will not, you know, that they feel like their situation is they're going to put a mask on their child or allow that child to make that decision because they're okay with that. But it should be, really should be, their choice. I think as we make this decision as well, we absolutely have to think about the longevity of the district. And the reality is that parents are searching for other options right now. Whether they, and most do not want to do that. I've heard most say that they love NL. They want, they've graduated from NL. They want to see their children graduate from NL. And for sure, I want to see my children graduate from NL. So there's a risk of students leaving, and obviously, that has a financial risk. That by itself should not cause us to vote differently, but it does go into the equation. You know, we have a risk of, well, we're already seeing it. We're seeing a risk of increased bullying. And it's not because we've, it's not because people are wearing masks or not wearing masks. It's more because it's become the issue that it is. It's because we're sitting up here and we're debating this more and more and more versus trying to set something and move on. You know, I received a letter from, well, we all did, and I responded to the individual. You know, I apologize for the fact of what they went through here at Northern Lebanon. It wasn't the experience that I think we want Northern Lebanon to have. And in this case, the individual was wearing a mask and was being bullied. I don't think that's right on either side of this. But the situation that we have created here, or we've been put into and we're allowing, is that, and it's unfortunate. The individual has said they were okay if I'd read this. I am going to leave the name out of it.
Director Marlowe, I'd like to ask if you could please wrap it up. We do have eight other board members here this week.
All right. If you could, if you could give her respect as well, I will read what I have here, and we'll continue. And I think we will. The board will go as long as we need to. So, again, bullying's going both ways right now, and it's unfortunate. I think we've got to kind of take a step and move forward. Here's a statement. "I'm a senior at Northern Lebanon High School. Since I came here in seventh grade, I have not fit in. I don't fit in because I wear a leg brace. I don't fit in because I have cerebral AVM. I don't fit in because I can't use my right hand. And now I don't fit in because I wear a mask. I watched Tuesday night's board meeting, and what I heard scared me. Each time someone spoke in support of wearing masks, people in the audience yelled at them, shouted profanities, and harassed the speaker. These were adults, adults who should know better, adults who probably have children who are classmates of mine. What this means is I don't feel safe in my own school and my community. That isn't okay. It's unfair, and it's unjust. Just tonight, I saw several posts on social media from classmates that were just like the unkind and cruel words that these adults were speaking at the meeting. I don't feel safe celebrating my senior year in school with my friends because the attitude towards people who want to wear masks is negative, demeaning, and harassing. And once again, it makes me different because this, I have chosen to complete my final year online. It's with no thanks that I give this community for their lack of understanding, compassion, and love for those who are different like me." I picked one that was probably on the other side of where I sit, right? And I picked it because this situation is unraveling, and it's unfortunate. We've heard from many in the community tonight, and most of them, I think all of them, I don't think I heard a single negative statement tonight. This is an edge case, but it's real, and this situation is occurring as long as we continue to debate this and not move forward. We, you know, there was a request that we consider pursuing legal or litigation last week. I asked for that last week. We did not vote for that. And I'll just say again that I believe that we should consider or keep all options open to to figure out how we can make this decision here at the board level. Not just for this decision, but for future decisions. Despite that, I think we have the power to, through this exemption form, make it so that parents that are telling us they have issues can make it through this process. That's all I have for now.
Director Gray?
Thank you, Director Marlowe, for those comments. I'm going to, my voice is light. As many of you know, I don't talk real loud, so I'll take my mask off to say hello to everyone. This is my last year here on the board, and I've learned a lot of things. I've been here for 10 years. And one thing I've grown over the years, I've become less and less vocal in that I say what I feel, but I'm not going to draw this out. First thing I'd like to mention is that, like Director Marlowe, I've been very pleased this evening with the comments and the respect that everyone has given each other, whether they agreed or not with what was being said. I'm also very pleased, though, with what the board has come up with on the forum. I think it, as Director Marlowe mentioned, we looked at the spirit. I think that we looked at a form that needed maybe to be changed slightly so that it took into account those parent concerns, and yet still looked at the mandate and tried to follow it so that we protected the board from any legal or repercussions as we are, you know, really mandated to look at from the board's perspective. But one thing I would like to mention here is that regardless of which side you're on, if you, you know, I teach school, I teach second grade in a different district. And the idea that someone would be bullied because they wear a mask or because they don't wear a mask, there is no place in education for that type of behavior from, you know, from the kids to, you know, any adult that would, you know, turn a blind eye to that. But the idea that there is bullying, I'm certainly hopeful that we look into that because that is not something that I would expect in Northern Lebanon or really any school district. So with that, I will pass it on to our next board member. Thank you.
Director Erdman?
So my stance hasn't changed since before this order happened. I still feel that masks should be optional. I feel that's what's most healthy for everyone to be able to have the choice to do what they feel serves them best. I liked what everyone had to say as far as how they said it, the class they used to say it. Tyler Longenekker, I appreciated hearing him talk about Northern Lebanon community being fighters, given the analogies of how he was a little scrapper back in the day, which I know he was. So that was neat to hear, and I do want to say to him and everyone that I do feel, he said we need to keep working on this, both you as a community and us as the community that represents you. He said we need to keep working on it, and I honestly, I feel we are, even from the last meeting last week to the meeting this week, the two examples I can cite for that would be, one, the exemption form being edited a little bit since last week. I think the doctor's signature edit that we did to it is a little bit of a game changer. Doesn't necessarily mean that everyone's going to get an exemption, but it's definitely something that, you know, we can try to get to happen for our kids. So that's one way we worked on it. Another thing we talked about, I heard a lot of people say we need to stand up in here, and I think the board is standing up. I know at the end of the meeting last week, a lot of people had left, but if you watched the video, we did talk as a board about, as Mr. Marlowe said, pursuing this and a legal issue with some, you know, are we going to pursue this or not? We voted, and as a team, the vote was that we want to pursue it. It was five-four, six-three. I don't know. Personally, I felt we should pursue. I felt we should pursue it, but you know what? Even though that vote occurred, you know, we need to stick together as a team. And that vote actually kind of happened throughout the state anyway, pretty much everywhere. And one or two school districts actually did choose to take a legal avenue to this governor mandate. So whatever happens with that mandate, it's talking to Mrs. Say before the meeting, you know, that when, it might take a month, it might take two months, but there will be a court. The courts are going to decide whether this is legit or not, this mandate that was passed down by the governor. So it's kind of like our vote last week. Those of us that wanted it kind of got what we wanted anyway. It just didn't come through Northern Lebanon being the ones to solve the case. So I don't care how things get done. I just want them to get done. So that is getting done somewhere in the state. A school decided to fight it. So that's a good thing. I'm glad to hear that. Mr. Simpson, I like hearing you talk. You shoot from the hip. You don't have notes. You have great things to say, and I appreciate that. Like I said earlier, my stance hasn't changed with my thoughts on the mask, and my stance hasn't changed with the comment he referenced, which was, I called this a game last week. I still feel strongly, you know, whether I'm right or wrong. I feel this is definitely a political, it's a political game, in my opinion. I'm entitled to that, and I could be wrong. But my stance hasn't changed. I know he had talked about eventually maybe dropping names. That's great, whatever. It's all good. That's freedom of speech. I don't know where my kids stand right now. I don't know what list they're on. I filled out the exemption form, and I can tell you, I wrote down, "They have trouble breathing, and it makes them feel sick." I'm guessing I told them probably on the 20th, when this thing, the last day comes, you're probably going to be wearing a mask. So put one in your bag, because once again, Mr. Simpson, I do think it's a game. And like Mrs. England said, school board members, we don't get many perks. So you may think there are perks here, but believe me, in six years, I've had, my boys have been called to the office, and for some of the dumbest things, they get smacked with two days of ISS, and my wife's like, "Boy, that really helped you, your board member." Like, what the heck, you know? So I don't think any perks are going to happen with board members. I'm sure my kids are going to be wearing a mask on the 20th when their name gets called, and, you know, their excuse isn't legit. But I'm just hoping that the schools that have taken the legal path here, hopefully that fight comes out on the right end for all public schools, and we can get back to this freedom of choice for the masks. Thank you. Thank you.
Director Nom?
Yes, thank you, as, uh, as Director Erdman just said, we have very few perks as board members. And one of the perks that we have is we get to talk, so I'm gonna talk because I just like doing it. I, I should probably take Director Gray's advice and grow up and not talk so much, but I feel like I need to. I wanna put, I wanna address a few controversies that were raised i- in the course of the last two weeks. First of all, yes, I graduated from Ohio State. So if any of you have an issue with anybody here, you have it with me, I know, I know. Yeah, gonna lose, no, I, I'm kidding, I actually think your team has a chance to beat mine this year and that is really frustrating. The second controversy that I'd like to address is that, um, a- and I was not asked to do this and I want you to know that. But, uh, an issue has been raised regarding the role of the solicitor, uh, for this board. A- and I'm not doing this for any points, I certainly am not looking for a job at Stock and Leader. If I've learned anything, it's that the last field of law I ever wanna deal with is school law, uh, with maybe the exception of divorce law. There's questions that have been urged, um, to this board in terms of challenging the Department of Health Order, as well as the question of whether and how we comply with the order. And I want you to know that both of these are fundamentally legal questions and as such, those questions require legal analysis. As a board and a district, I believe we would be foolish and negligent if we did not rely on our solicitor's advice and listen to their recommendations. I would hope that any of us acting in our own private capacity, in considering questions of law and whether we comply with law, would rely on the advice of our own attorney. Does this mean we have to act as the solicitor recommends? It does not, but not doing so and acting in contravention to the advice of counsel is an enormous risk. To this point, Stock and Leader have provided us with reliable legal assistance since we first engaged them. And that has not stopped by any measure. I also want the public to know that the questions that you have raised passionately have been raised in executive session. I, I, I won't go into the details of that, but these questions have been raised and we have gone back and forth. So your interests are being advocated even if from your seat, it does not appear that they are. Am I completely happy with the legal advice we've received? No, I'm not, but that is the nature of law in many ways. But that said, I have absolutely no reason to believe that anything that Stock and Leader has provided to us in the form of analysis of the law or advice on how the district should act is inconsistent with applicable law or contrary to what a reasonable district should do. Now regarding the possibility itself of challenging the order, as, as many of you know, we did have a vote last week to discuss whether we should explore additional options. I can only speak personally and I am only speaking personally, I don't offer this as a formal legal opinion in any way. And it is not a reflection of the position of this board. I can tell you that personally, I believe this order is a constitutional overreach. I'm incredibly, hold on, hold on, thank you. I'm incredibly frustrated that the state has foisted its own position on this district in the face of our local authority. I have turned this over and over and over in my head looking for a solution, but I also believe that there is no viable route for us to pursue as a board to challenge the order in the courts if we wanted to do so. That also incredibly frustrates me, but many components of constitutional law and civil procedure are frustrating. I'm happy to talk with anybody about this offline. I've got nowhere to go tonight and nothing to do except to draft an addendum to a lease agreement, which I'm not looking forward to. I'll hang out and share with you my perspective on this if you need it. As was already stated, a private challenge is pending in the courts right now. I'm genuinely curi- curious, some might say pessimistically hopeful, in its outcome. But the fact is that the board voted last week that for now, we will not pursue a discussion of a legal challenge. The further fact, as far as I'm aware, is that no public school district has challenged the order and that's for a reason. The last issue, and this is the issue that was raised, um, by this agenda item, is the mask exemption form itself. Again, my own opinion, based on a reading of the plain language of the masking mandate order, my own personal convictions, I believe that the question of wearing a mask should be a personal decision and declaration based on a physical or mental condition or disability. This is why I voted in July for an optional masking policy. If it was entirely up to me, we would have a simple form that follows the plain language of the order, but it is not up to me. We are each members of a nine-member board of duly-elected Board of Directors. And just because I believe my opinion is right, I cannot declare that the others are categorically wrong. I also understand that the guidance from the Department of Education is entirely different from mine. And that this guidance, including threats of litigation, fines, penalties and losses of certifications and licenses, carries a lot of weight. I also understand that the prevailing legal opinion in the Commonwealth differs from my own personal belief. And that this opinion includes the necessity of guarding against penalties and punishments for the district. If those penalties and punishments carry actual legal weight and were to be inflicted, I do believe that our district would be irrevocably set back. And we do undeniably fall under the purview of the Department of Education. Frankly, I wish the Department of Education and the Secretary of Education had not resorted to threats of legal consequences. And I believe that the secretary would better serve the Commonwealth by focusing on matters of public education and avoid playing barracks lawyer by issuing idle legal threats. If it were up to just me and my own interest, I would face those penalties and punishments because I'm not confirmed, concerned for myself. But it's not up to me and much more than my own interests are at stake. Therefore, I cannot begrudge anyone, including other districts that have initially taken one position and have subsequently changed course due to DOE guidance and pressure or any of my colleagues on this board for seeing the issue differently than I do. The revision itself to the exemption form is not perfect in my mind. It does not go far enough, but I do believe that it is an honest and well-thought-out effort to accommodate our families and the district in an absolute no-win, impossible situation. I would rather that it was different, but the form is rational and I believe supported by legal analysis. I also believe that I'm in the minority. But for that reason, I believe we should adopt it and try to work with our families to make reasonable accommodations for those in need. I have every confidence in our district administration that this will be the case. And I just wanna end, and I'm sorry for the time that it's taken, but I wanna end with a personal anecdote, for what it's worth. Saturday was the 20th year marking of the 9/11 event. I think those of us that were alive at the time and old enough to remember all remember exactly and precisely where we were and what we were doing. I was in law school at Ohio State, in between classes, I had to make a phone call to the Regional Training Institute of the Ohio National Guard because I had just been commissioned two days before as a second lieutenant. And as I'm on the phone with the NCO, the NCO says a plane just hit the towers, the, the World Trade Center. I thought it must be a small plane and she said, no, it was a, it was a jetliner, I, I need to call you back. So I went over to the student union where they had a big screen TV and I was standing there with probably 30, 40 people watching as the second plane hit the tower. And I remember thinking to myself and saying to the person next to me, we're at war. I spent the next hour trying to contact my wife, but all of the telephone lines were completely full. I could not reach her, she worked in the tallest building in Columbus, Ohio. And at the time, I thought she was not gonna make it home. We had one cell phone for the person that was driving the car and she had the car. Hitched a ride home with a marine buddy of mine, spent that night in a church praying and crying with strangers and people within my community over what had just happened. Fast forward two years later, I'm in the desert in combat operations, trying to destroy an enemy who is trying desperately to destroy me. And I remember, and many of you in this room can probably relate to that. And I remember thinking to myself, all I want to do is get home to my wife, my son I've never met, who graduated last year, and to my fellow countrymen. Because I knew that this was a safe place for me and my family to grow up and to live. We've come a long way in the 20 years since 9/11 and friends, it's not good. But what I can tell you is that there's nobody in this room that wants to kill any child by exposing them to a virus. And there's nobody in this room that wants to harm a child by putting a mask on them. Even though I did not live in Pennsylvania at the time, you were the people that I was waiting to come home to. And I am really proud to call myself a member of this Northern Lebanon community. And the last thing that we can do is to call each other enemies and treat each other that way. And I cannot tell you how grateful I am for the respect, for the most part, that we have shown to each other this evening. And I implore us to continue to do that, we're gonna get through this. And 20 years from now, we're gonna look back on this and hopefully, um, remember it more fondly than we do today. But we've got work to do. Thank you, that's all.
Director Sappal?
Yeah, so I really can't follow that. I think I'm just gonna stick to the discussion item, which is, um, I agree with Director Gray that we've made accommodations and changes, um, appropriate. I think it's meeting in the middle. I think that both sides are probably not happy with it, I think that one side probably wants the doctor's signature on it and I think the other side wants just a parent's signature. So I believe we've taken the appropriate steps to meet in the middle. Because while we hear from the majority in here tonight, we also have to think about every child, including the one that you read the letter about. So I think we are meeting in the middle and that is what we do. And I know it's a five, four, I've been on a five, four board before, it makes nothing easy. It can make things very decisive, divisive, it can make enemies quickly. And I really hope I don't see that happen. I know that Glenn and I only have about four of these left, but I hope moving forward that this board comes together and respects majority votes. I've been on the minority side of some votes that I was very passionately against or for and it's hard to swallow because we are a team, we are individual, we have our own individual opinions. We are allowed to have those opinions outside of this room. We are respectful of each other when we sit up here and I think we're respectful of each other when we leave. So I hope that that continues.
Director Murray?
We need to avoid a back and forth, please.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to, uh, thank each one of you, I had many phone calls, uh, text messages. And of course, hearing from all of you, um, tonight and reading emails and, and, um, I have read each one of them. I have not responded to all of them, um, but, um, I thank you for taking the time and coming here and, and, and sharing your concerns and your stories. And I appreciate hearing every single one of them. I really do appreciate every person in this community, I don't just say those as words. Um, I really do live my life, um, loving God, loving people and focusing on eternity. And I, um, pray that we can continue to do each one of those things as we can continue to, uh, be together in community and, and work towards the good of this community. I would just, um, focus on the form, um, and that's our discussion item for tonight. As many have said before, I believe that we have met in the middle, I believe that we have, um, produced something that is a little bit more manageable. Um, I believe that we have still met the guidelines that were required to meet. And, um, the Northern Lebanon that you know and love, that I know and love, that works with our students, that works with our families, that has a personal touch, um, will still be, um, it, it still exists, that's still here and that's still part of what, uh, why I am part of this community and continue to be a part of this community. So, um, we want to work with you, um, and we want to work to protect, um, those that we love that are part of this community and we want them to continue to provide leadership here. So, thank you.
Is Director Klein still online?
Yeah, yes, can you hear me? Hi guys, can you? Okay, yeah, I'm gonna make this really short, uh, first, I'd like to commend the student who spoke tonight. Well done, well done, young man, our community needs more people like you. Personally, I believe the challenges of enforcing this mandate should not be our administration, our teachers and our staff's duty. I believe this is a gigantic distraction from our main duty, which is educating school, school-aged children. You know, but last week, we, we did decide to not seek out any legal measures. And as Director Marlowe mentioned tonight, we just need to keep advocating earnestly. And lastly, I just wanna thank our, my fellow board members, I think you guys did a phenomenal job tonight expressing your views with our community. Thank you.
I'll keep my comments brief this evening. I'm pleased with the changes that we have made with the exemption form. I think it is extremely important that those that medically or emotionally need those exemptions, that they can receive them. We've also been advised that we need to ensure that they are medically relevant exemptions. The Pennsylvania Department of Education has given strict warnings, um, against that and making it very clear that we, we are not able to make it simply parental choice. And, and so I think that the changes that we have made to the exemption form are, are appropriate. Now we will move on to the reports from our representatives. We have up first, the Change Order Committee, that is Director Marlowe. Please stop speaking out. We will not continue having in-person meetings if we continue to have interjections. There was no vote this evening for the mask mandate. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Marlowe has the floor. Mr. Marlowe? We are asking for respect. We want to continue to hear from, from community members at each meeting.
There does not need to be a vote, I will get them out first thing in the morning. That's correct.
So ma'am, I can answer that. So when you submit the form with or without medical documentation, that goes to, um, the Special Education Department and a group of administrators who review your requests. They look at information that the district might have, say, documents that are with the nurse, information from last year. And they consider whether they have sufficient information to move forward to provide an exemption. So there's a legal process under section 504 to consider that. Of course, one of the inquiries could be back to you that they need additional information in order to make the decision. And if you choose not to provide that, which is absolutely your right, um, that could result in an exemption. But the whole purpose, it could result in a lack of an exemption. But the whole purpose of this process is to engage you as parents to get information and to have that information be used by the district to make a decision, um, that's fair. It's just going to depend on the circumstances that are in front of the team. Sometimes medical documentation will be required to confirm a situation. Other times, they may seek consent to simply have a phone call to your physician to say, can you confirm this is present in the, in the medical record?
We're asking for, we're asking for community members to respect who has the floor. We were quiet when all of the community members were speaking and we appreciate that. We would like to finish the meeting in an orderly fashion. Director Marlowe has the floor.
Yeah, I, I don't know that answer, but.
If we want to continue having in-person meetings, we need to be able to speak and actually have the meeting. Please, we're asking for respect so that we can continue the meeting in an orderly fashion.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Marlowe has the floor. He needs to provide his report. Mr. Marlowe?
Yeah, I have no updates on, on this item specifically.
Moving to item two from our report, that is our Career and Technology Representative, Director Klein. Do you have a report for us this evening?
Mr. Klein, do you hear us?
Sorry, I could, I could barely hear you.
Do you have a report on career and technology?
Not at this time.
Next up is our intermediate unit representative, Director Murray.
Other than the report that you received by email, there's no additional report.
Then we have our Legislative PSBA Liaison, Director Sutella.
I think everyone's been pretty well briefed on legislative matters, so I think we're good.
Is there any new business for discussion this evening? I'd like to point out the dates to remember are listed at item 16. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. This meeting is adjourned.